Okay. Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Workshop number 1525 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're doing roll call votes. Mike Sheme, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero. So in order to meet current St. Louis guidelines, we are meeting in a social distance school environment with the cabinet and board members present in order to reduce the spread of COVID-19. The meeting is being streamed online via the district's YouTube channel. So we'll move to 4.0, the discussion topics. Tony, who's going to start us off here?
Yeah, so it'll be, Tara, are you first up on the agenda?
I am.
All right, Tara.
I'm excited tonight to share with you some of the work we've been doing within teaching and learning. There are two primary areas of focus tonight. One, to talk about our International Baccalaureate Program, the IB program, and how that's been evaluated and recommendations that are coming forward regarding that. And then also talking about student success during COVID, what measurement we are using, and then how we're providing interventions for our students. So I'm going to start by turning it over to Dr. Ronnie Zagora, our Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Eric Cochran, our high school principal, and Miranda Galvin, our honors coordinator at the high school. And I believe Eric is going to begin.
Thank you. So my job's really easy, is just to quickly review why we're here, why we're talking about this topic. I know we've had a board workshop before where we've discussed IB. IB is a program that has served us very well, and I don't know that we need to go through and revisit all the reasons why we decided to start looking at it. But like all good programs, it's important to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our current students. We've added a lot of different programming at the high school over the last several years that is competing with IB, and there are some other options, one in particular that you'll hear about, that offers maybe a little more flexibility for our students. And so we thought it was a good idea to get a committee together of some parents and some students, several of whom have been involved in the IB program. And I think Ronnie's going to talk about how that committee went.
There we go. That green light's important. So our review committee for the International Baccalaureate Program included parents of students who had graduated from the IB program and parents of current IB students. We also wanted to make sure that we included student voices. We intentionally selected students that had graduated with the IB diploma, and then also current students, including one who was there to represent what I think is many students who very thoughtfully consider whether to pursue the IB diploma, but ultimately this particular student representative had decided not to. And so we wanted to include her perspective on why she had made the choices that she had made. Also, three IB teachers, two of whom teach combined IB AP courses, where they are trying to serve both programs within one course, and then one who has taught an IB course that is strictly IB for many years, but that one actually has recently become additionally a dual credit course. And then the three of us. So the committee met a couple of times in October, and we had some very thoughtful discussions about the direction that we would want to go when it comes to honors program offerings at Lindbergh High School. We upfront gave the committee three options. We said option number one would be to keep the IB program as it is. And when we say as it is, it comes with all of the challenges that we shared with the board at the summer workshop, issues with combining IB and AP courses that we're not able to fully separate, and scheduling challenges, and what I think we would say is some uneven enrollment over the years. Some years where we have a number of IB diploma candidates, you know, ranging in 15 to 20, and other years where we have three. So option two was that we would consider what it would take to fully separate the IB and AP programs so that we could offer both and serve both faithfully and achieve the goals of both programs. And then number three is considering some kind of phase out over time of the IB program with the investigation of an alternative program that has come about in recent years called the AP Capstone Diploma, which offers many of the features of IB, and Miranda will be talking a little bit about moving forward. So in these committee meetings, we reviewed survey data from students. We reviewed survey data from teachers that have been teaching IB for a number of years, looked at some of the enrollment trends, and then also especially from the parents and those graduates. Got a lot of really helpful feedback about what their post-secondary experiences had been after they graduated from Lindbergh High School with an IB diploma, what advantages that provided, or maybe some advantages they expected, but that did not follow, which is one thing we talked about in the summer with college credit, for example, that we have found over the years that students actually are not always getting college credit for those IB scores that maybe in, you know, earlier eras they may have gotten. Go ahead and click to the next slide. So in summary, you know, these were a couple of conversations that lasted more than an hour apiece. So I've tried to summarize as succinctly as I can with these perspectives that were shared from the teachers on the committee and the teachers that filled out the survey. It's pretty consistently our IB teachers feel like they're being asked to serve two programs, both IB and AP, in a way that leaves them unable to do full justice to either program. So they are having to combine curricula in many cases. And those challenges fall then to our students, because our students are in sometimes, in some cases, forced into a two-year course, which really ought to be a one-year course. The examples that we gave you in the summer were our science courses where this happens, our AP Biology and Chemistry, which it should be by AP standards, a one-year course, but our students have to take it over the course of two years in order to meet those IB standards, even if they are not IB diploma candidates. So wait has been set up. So also what the conversation yielded when we looked a little more deeply at the AP Capstone is we do feel like the AP Capstone Diploma can offer a lot of what the IB diploma program offers. And for those things where we can't explicitly offer the particular content, for example, one of the great features of the IB program is that it has a curriculum with a global perspective. There's a global mindedness that goes along with being an IB diploma candidate, where their curriculum is really exposing them to a lot of perspectives and thoughts they may not otherwise encounter. And we feel like we could preserve some of those aspects by hanging on to a couple of courses that, even if they weren't IB and labeled, still preserve some of that global mindedness, like our Global Politics course and International Business course. And these courses also have the advantage of both being dual credit courses. They offer college credit along with a lengthy list of other courses that we're offering. So at this point, I am going to turn things over to Miranda to talk a little bit about what the AP Capstone is and what we feel like that could offer our students.
Thanks, Ronnie. So we're going to start by watching a short video that was put out by the College Board that describes the AP Capstone Program and some of its benefits.
AP Capstone is an innovative program for high school students designed in partnership with college faculty. Built on two new courses from the Advanced Placement Program, AP Capstone challenges students to select their own topics of study. In AP Seminar, students learn to evaluate the strength of an argument, pose solutions, collaborate, and communicate. In AP Research, students design, plan, and conduct a year-long investigation on a topic they choose. Both courses foster collaboration, research, and analytical writing.
Within AP Capstone, the seminar course is innovative for its flexibility. The research program has a similar focus of flexibility and innovation that we find attractive. Instructors and their students can choose the topic they're going to focus on. It has to be interdisciplinary, it has to be engaging, it has to be pressing.
The AP Capstone Program is, I think, one of the most exciting innovations a college board has ever come up with, and it's primarily because the teaching focus is shifted from content to skills. That is a paradigm shift.
The AP Capstone Program was implemented in fall 2014 in 114 schools in the United States and in 22 schools throughout Canada, Europe, and Asia. The number of schools and students participating in the program are both expected to grow rapidly. Diversity in classes is fundamental to AP Capstone.
I see so much growth in the students over the year with writing and learning how to not just synthesize information, which is so critical, but also to draw conclusions and solutions and think about problems in the world around them. They also learn to work in teams and collaborate with each other, which is a critical skill in today's society.
I was sitting here listening to our students in some of the presentations, and I wasn't seeing 16- to 17-year-old high school students. I was seeing 20- to 21-year-old college students sitting here, going through some of these topics that range anywhere from euthanasia, the human trafficking, pop culture. Their intellectual maturity over the few months that we've had the program is outstanding.
The AP Capstone classes really help students develop the ability to do inquiry, to learn about gathering information, what information to trust, or how to put that information in context, how to form an argument based on the data and the evidence and the information that they've got, and then how to communicate it.
AP Capstone exams are validated by an external team of expert faculty from high schools and colleges.
The external validation associated with AP and AP Capstone does is it gives us a national standard. And for people like me that work in admissions and enrollment at selective universities, that in itself is of huge value. So we trust what we see.
The AP Capstone Program, I think, is very unique. It's a broad program that gives skills that we think are very valuable, not only for college, but life skills. The ability to analyze, to critically think, to present that information is really wonderful. And I think both courses do a great job of preparing the student for the rest of their lives.
Fostering the research, argumentation, and communication skills that provide a foundation for college and career success.
So two things that really stand out to me when I learned more about the AP Capstone Program were the student agency and the flexibility that the courses provide. Empowering students to have a voice and a choice in what they're learning only deepens their love for learning and the ability that they might gain from those programs. The two-year course starts with a seminar course where the students begin in a team setting where they work together on a research project and then present as a team. And as they go through that, it shifts to an individual focus. So they build a level of comfort working and collaborating with their peers, and then really show what they know as an individual. That first-year program does have an AP test associated with it to measure their ability to write an evidence-based argument, to synthesize information, and to show that they've really learned the knowledge necessary in that course. When they move on to year two, the students spend the whole year writing a 5,000-word research essay as an individual. It's essentially a high school dissertation. At the end of that, they present a 15- to 20-minute defense of their research that they've spent the year doing, and they do that to their peers and then to three to four evaluators. It could be teachers, it could be me, we can invite other people from the community to watch it. But it really does give them the skills that they need, not only in high school, but also in college and then in whatever career pathway they decide to choose. One thing that I think is really important is recognition for the work that they do. And within that, they can either earn a Capstone certificate, or they can go all the way with earning a Capstone Diploma. So to separate those two, the students just need to take four more AP classes, earning a three-year higher on those exams. And those are more skill, or excuse me, content-based courses. And then they get the Capstone skill-based focus in the Capstone Program. So the other part of that that I think is great is the flexibility. Like Ronnie had said earlier, we have introduced several new programs over the last five years at the high school. And what those programs have started to do is compete with one another. And some of them, they just can't participate in everything. Capstone is a program that would allow students to still do things like internships or participate in CAPS, participate in band and other music classes, yearbook, student council, that some of our other programs just don't offer that same flexibility. So I think that's really important as we start to introduce new programs, that we allow our students to participate in as many things as they can to walk away saying, "I could do that if I wanted to do it." So there's a few other marks that make Capstone great, but you can really learn a ton about Capstone. There's a link on the bottom there that provides the curriculum, the objectives for the courses, the outcomes that are hoped to gain from the students. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Capstone is great, or either here or anytime. So, thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. So the last slide is a timeline that we've proposed for a phase-in of the AP Capstone. And I've also included here the columns that show what science courses would be offered. And that's just to give you an example of how phasing in something like the AP Capstone can start to introduce more flexibility. And so as just a quick note, if you look at the current ninth-grade class, for example, those students would be able to take, as juniors, AP Physics, as seniors, AP Chemistry, AP Biology. They could take all of those courses if they wanted to. And that's not something that current students can do because of the IB schedule. So as it's proposed here, our current 10th graders, who, you know, some of whom have already kind of planned on that IB program, nothing would change for them. You'll notice it shows that we, honors program offered, we add AP Capstone there for our current ninth graders. However, we're not setting an expiration date on IB. We do think that the AP Capstone is probably going to be more appealing to a lot of students because of its flexibility. And so we want to introduce that for the current ninth graders as they, by the time they get to 11th grade, to have that first Capstone course in place. So then they could take those courses as 11th and 12th graders and get that AP Capstone Diploma. The seminar and research courses actually can start for students, I believe, as young as 10th grade. Is that right, Miranda? So in the future, it wouldn't just be limited to junior and senior year that they could take those two courses. One thing that I think it's important to add, some of the feedback we got from members of our committee, from students and parents. I want to emphasize that the students and parents on our committee, they loved IB. By and large, they loved IB. IB's been a great program and has served our students very well. And so while there was, you know, strong defense of the value of IB, I would say there was also consensus around it is limiting. And as they learned more about the AP Capstone, the conversation shifted to, at one point, I remember a student saying, "If given the choice, I could see where most students would choose an AP Capstone-type program." They're getting a lot of the advantages that they get from IB, but they don't have that rigidity. And as Miranda pointed out, so many other programs that would be open to students that currently aren't open to students who choose the full IB Diploma program. So this is how we've proposed it here. Again, just kind of a slow phase-in, and you know, as for the future of IB, we will see. We do feel like we're offering a new program here that is going to probably attract a lot of interest from a lot of our families. Any questions?
Okay, there we go. And it's green today. I may have missed this, but what's the end result? You have an AP whatever diploma. Does that equal college credits? What does that equal at the end?
Go ahead.
So there are colleges and universities that offer credit for the seminar and research courses.
Okay.
Yeah. Ultimately, it's a college-based decision on how they accept and award credit for any AP class. So if you looked at different college websites, you would see different, some offer placement, some offer credit, and it would be the same thing for the seminar research class.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a compliment for you on this because I'm very impressed. I mean, just as someone with a lot of higher education background, I can see how this can really help sort of, you know, streamline a student's experience going from high school into college. You know, the Capstone Project, pulling all that research together, presenting before a group of people. Now, you know, again, in higher education settings, you're going to see that obviously in your senior thesis as an undergrad, in your master's thesis, or your doctoral dissertation. You'll see it, and we have seen it more and more in the workplace, obviously, where, you know, people are in settings much like this, where you're pulling together a lot of information for presentation and discussion. So it's, I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on with the teaching and learning portion of the workshop, we want to talk to you about how our students are doing this year. There's been a lot of national and local attention around student performance in the wake of COVID-19 and what that looks like when we know that students have been in hybrid models of learning or virtual learning. And so what we're going to do today is share with you what we know about how our students are performing right now. There's also a lot we don't know currently, and that is because our students, even as of today, are in grades first through eighth grade, are working on their winter assessments. So when we look at our FastBridge winter assessments, with the exception of kindergarten, we still have our first through third graders taking that assessment. So we'll be able to measure their growth in the coming weeks. The same is true with our NWEA MAP assessment that has been used for the first time this school year to measure learning growth of our students. They took this in September, and they're currently taking it in winter. So we'll be able to continually see that growth of our students. But we can tell you and share with you what we know from earlier in the school year. And then when we talk about high school, we don't have that same specific assessment tool currently. That is something that is in process of being analyzed and evaluated for the future. So we're looking at how are our students doing based on classroom performance? So Dr. Craig Hamby, our Director of Elementary Education, is going to start by sharing the FastBridge data. And then Dr. Jill Lawson, our Director of Assessment and Student Services, is going to talk about the data related to fourth through eighth grade. And then Dr. Cochran will sum it up with high school performance in this first semester. When they're finished, then I will go through with you the interventions that have been put into place to continue to support students, as well as the fact that they're also gaining a lot in this time period. So I want to highlight some of that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hamby.
Thank you. So the first slide we have here is a chart that's just kind of illustrating the adoption or implementation of our phonics program. So you can see back in 1718, we had no phonics program, to this year, full implementation of the Sunde system in our elementaries. What's not on the chart is we also have in kindergarten and first grade the Hegarty system, which teaches phonemic awareness. Next slide, please. This is a quick summary of some of the professional learning that's been literacy-specific for our staff over the last two years. Dr. Walter provides just a host of opportunities for our staff to attend to become better at their literacy instruction. Next slide. So kindergarten, we screened in the winter. That's our first screening. They don't screen the fall. And as Tara said, our first through third grades are taking FastBridge this week for the screening. So I'm going to share with you some different numbers that we have, either from the winter screening of kindergartners, which happened in December, or the fall screenings for grades one through three. Before we dig into the data, please consider the following. I think it goes without saying that this year is different than any other school year we've ever had. But some things to keep in mind, that the fourth quarter last year for our first through third graders was a surprise virtual program sprung upon us. Our students enrolled in in-person instruction at the elementaries. We're only in-person 42 days for in-person instruction, as opposed to an average of 70 days the previous two years. Assessments were, by and large, given virtually to the students. And also, when we compare, we look at the numbers to determine the risk level. It's compared to a norm. But that norm is a non-pandemic norm. So when they established those norms previously, there were no quarantines, there were no shutdowns. It's a non-pandemic norm. So as you look at the first group, this is our winter kindergarten students this year, with 26% of our students in high risk and 36% of our students in low risk. And, you know, that's our first screening with these kindergartners, the first time they've taken it. It's also just the first layer of the onion. So what you have to do is start to peel this thing apart a little bit as a teacher and find out, okay, I've got some kids in the red, they're high-risk, but what does that mean? So these students actually take four subtests, onset sounds, letter sounds, word segmenting, and nonsense words. So we have to dig in there. So just because you're high-risk doesn't automatically mean you're high-risk in all those areas. So a teacher needs to dig into that data and find out, where do I need to target my instruction to do the best for these students? And if you're in red, you might have some strengths. And if you're in green, there might still be plenty of things for you to work on as a reader also. Next slide, please. If you compare our kindergartners this year to our previous kindergarten classes, so the chart on the left are our current second graders. And if you look at when they were in kindergarten in the winter of 1819, the numbers are pretty similar. Actually, this year's kindergartners are doing a little bit better than where we were with our second graders when they were in kindergarten. Now, last year's first graders, they did awesome when they were in kindergarten. They were, that's a full year of phonics implementation. Teachers were getting the professional learning. We were doing a wonderful job. And so our kindergarten numbers this year don't look as good as they did last year with our first graders, but I know that we'll get back to that point. I have all confidence that we'll return to that point. This is the first-grade reading composite score. So this is our A reading, or early reading composite, I'm sorry. And what you can see is if we just look at the chart on the left, that's where the students were in kindergarten in the winter. And the chart on the, or the bar on the right is where they are at the fall of this year. So we don't have their winter scores yet. They're taking that this week. But you can see they went from 12% high-risk to 20% high-risk, and 57% low-risk to 50% low-risk. So I would say that how school ended last year and how we've begun this year has had some effect in the earlier grades. No spring screening for these students. And that would be the same for our second and third graders also. No springs screenings at the end of last year to compare to. Our next slide is our current second graders. Now, they take a different test. So kindergarten and first grade take early reading. It's a composite of those several subtests. Then when we get to second grade, they take A reading and they take CBM. So CBM is basically just word reading. They're reading a passage, and we're recording how many words that they can decode correctly, basically fluency. So you can see that our current second graders were the winter when they were in first grade and where they were this fall. So you can see last year, we were only at 2% high-risk at the winter when these kids were in first grade. They were doing fantastic. So not as fantastic in the fall, but, you know, we've still got a whole year or half a year of instruction to do with these kids. We'll see where we're at at the end of the school year. The blue in this, they label it college pathway, but really, it's above the 50th percentile. So if you think of national norms, if you're in the blue, you're in the 50th percentile. But if you look at it, 66% of our kids are still above the 50th percentile. And we're saying this is an off-year for our kiddos. The next chart just compares our second graders in the A reading. A reading is a adaptive, comprehensive test of second-grade reading skills. And you can see that the numbers are pretty comparable from 13% high-risk last year to 16% this year, and 24% to 23% at summer. So pretty comparable on the A reading test for the second graders. And then finally, our third graders. And our third graders kind of bucked the trend a little bit. The pandemic didn't seem to bother them too much. They've got several years of phonics instruction under their belt. When these students were in kindergarten, we had no phonics program. But when they were in first grade, we had the impact study. And then in second grade, they had a full year of phonics instruction. And they've begun this year, and they'll have a full year of phonics instruction. So the first chart is their A reading. And you can see 45% of our third graders in the fall were at college pathway. And then another 28% are in the low-risk category, and only 7% in the high-risk in the fall this year. So third grade, they're holding their own, doing very well. And then my final chart is the CBM. So this is the word reading test for third graders, and they're holding steady here. So 66% in the college pathway are above the 50th percentile, and only 9% at the high-risk category. So third grade doing very well. Now, this is just a snapshot of where we are currently. We'll have a better idea of exactly where our kids are at the end of the year when we do our spring screenings. So it'll probably be good to come back and kind of compare these charts in May. Thank you. What questions might you have? All right, thank you.
Dr. Lawson?
Okay, so I'm going to talk to you guys about the NWEA assessment. And what this, this is our first year doing this assessment. We did a study on it last year, and this is the first year of full implementation. And so really, the purpose, the why behind this assessment is to see where our students, regardless of a pandemic, to see where our students are at the beginning of the year and to see where they end at the close of the school year so we can see the impact that we have, but also to allow students to see the, see the impact of their hard work and everything that they do in the classroom as well. So that's really the purpose behind this assessment. And one of the things that we are, we did not, And one of the things that we are, we did not, of course, expect to administer this for the first time during a pandemic, but here we are. So if you look up at our, at the screen, you'll see that I'm going to show the first comparison is our RIT scores. And that's what we'll refer to them. Students will refer to them as RIT scores, teachers will refer to them as RIT scores. But really what it is, is a rash unit. It's a scale score in a sense that students will be able to track their progress from whatever year they started taking this assessment to the year they in, you know, participating in this assessment as well. And so when you look up here, every grade level has a, a national mean, RIT score. And so if you look up at the first table for the math mean, you'll see in the national column that we have fourth grade, the national RIT score is two hundred. That's the national mean. That means that's pretty much like the fiftieth percentile. And if you look over to the right where it says LS Limburg Schools, you'll see that our RIT score was one ninety-nine. So I'm pointing that out, but as you move through this table, going all the way down, you'll see the national RIT score for NWEA and then the Limburg Schools district RIT score. So in every single, regardless of, or excuse me, on the math and the reading, our district is above the national RIT score in every area except for fourth grade math. And we're one point below. So you can read it like that. So just to give you a little context about the RIT scores, they were, they are, have just been released in July of two thousand twenty. And they were actually, the case and the, the study to create these new RIT score norms was done between the year two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. So definitely prior to the pandemic. And it is a comparison of three point six million to five point five million, depending on which test, test scores. So that's about five hundred to seven hundred thousand students who are a part of this study. And so, and it's in all fifty states. So it really gives us a good comparison. So when I say a national RIT score mean, I'm really talking about all those who participate in the NWEA, but it's a significant pool of participants. So I would see it as a credible score to do a comparison in for our district. So as you guys move through, you'll see that in math, we are above the national RIT score in most cases. I'm sorry, Tony, can you go back one more real quick? Thank you. You will see that we are above the national mean, but in math, it's not as high as it is in reading. So we are higher above in reading. And so I would say right now, just based on these fall, these fall results from September, that math has definitely, and you'll see it in the next table and charts coming up, math maybe shows the biggest impact of not having, in a sense, a fourth quarter of more so than even reading, just by doing some analysis. So moving on to the next slide, thank you so much. So the students receive these RIT scores. And what it does is from that score, it, it puts them into a quintile. That's how NWEA really reports. So students can see, how am I doing in comparison to others that are in the same grade level that I am? And so this is the fourth and fifth grade reading quintile report. So you'll see that our, we have low, low average, average, high average, and high. And if I were just looking at this for the first time and didn't do a lot of study on this, one of the things I may start to do is compare this to our state level assessment scores and say, oh, so low would be like below basic and basic, and then we have our proficient and advanced. But I would encourage you to not look at it that way and instead to look at it from the average to the high. Now, as Limburg, we always want our students to be above average. So to even say average sounds really kind of insulting, but really when you think about it, fiftieth percentile, although we will, as parents are probably all in denial of that, is an average score for a student to get. That means they are on track or above. Now, of course, none of us want to ever accept anything below the ninety-ninth percentile for our children, and that's just because we're all good parents. But nonetheless, we are looking for that fiftieth percentile and above to really make sure that our students are on track. So when you are looking at this, I would encourage you to look from, to look at it that way, from average and above. So the low and the low average, of course, are still high concern. So now we can go in from our fall data, this was taken in September, and see how can we help to intervene for our students? So I would say from looking at this, that although I don't want to see any students ever in the low, or the low average, we are at about twenty, you know, twenty-one percent for fourth grade and about the same for fifth grade in reading. And so we have some work to do, but that, we have more students doing well, that are on track and above. So next slide. In math, again, so this, this area, math, I would say showed the most, shows the most area of concern regarding how COVID has impacted our students. And also, it's a new assessment, there's new tools. So there could be many variables in why a student is performing well or, or not well. Our students in fourth grade had one week, really probably even less than a week of in-person time when they came full in-person, when we started to do this assessment as well. So I think there's many variables that we can, we could discuss as we look through this data. But again, looking at that average and above, we'll see that we have in close to sixty percent or a little higher in that area. We would like to see that increase. If you went back to, I'll just summarize it really quick. The reading, we had more in the high seventies. Seventy-eight percent of our students were on track and above. And in this particular one, we're only seeing it in the sixties. And so that is, that is an area to, to continue to look into more. Going to the next slide. So for our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, same story for the reading. Not, even though we don't want to see any students in low, in low average, the impact is not nearly as, the impact is not nearly as big as it will, you will see in the math. Although there is one, there is one anomaly, and that is sixth grade math. So I will show you that. But when you look at our sixth grade math for reading, you're going to see that we have almost eighty percent in sixth grade and almost eighty percent in seventh grade that are average or above. And that is without, that is with a complete hybrid schedule and no quarter, no fourth quarter innocence. When I say that, I just mean the instruction was really not so much new instruction as much in the fourth quarter. And then in eighth grade, it's, it's only seventy-two percent. And it, but it's still, is, you know, it's still not what we maybe thought things would be for reading. So that was a, that was a, that was something to take note of. If you go to middle school math in the next slide, you will see that, that sixth grade, we have seventy-three point four two percent that are average or above. So not as high as what you saw in fourth and fifth grade or that you see in seventh and eighth. But it's definitely some area of concern or area to grow. I don't want to say concern, I want to say area to grow in seventh and eighth grade when it comes to these particular scores. So I think that's all I have for the NWEA. So we are now administering these, the winter assessments. So we'll be looking at growth data. Again, you know, it's, there's going to be a lot of variables involved in it. But overall, we're excited to see where our students and teachers go. Another thing to just notice, this was the first time some of our students ever laid eyes on this assessment. And it is such a shift in, in assessment philosophy that we have had in the past. So I would say that there, again, always a lot of variables to discuss when you're looking at data.
Quick question. So as we look at student growth, then you would expect the RIT score for students individually and obviously the whole group to continue to increase year over year, assessment over assessment?
Yes, and that's why it's so nice to look at it that way. Because if a student says scored, I'm just going to give a, a number of two hundred, well, the RIT score follows, the RIT score just scale is a continuum. So you will see it go to like three hundred, so for example. So we're watching a student grow along that way. And there is a projected and a normed growth that students should have between fall and winter and winter and spring and year to year. So we can also see that they are making the adequate growth that they're supposed to make along the way. So we could always say, oh, well, the student's growing, but are they growing, you know, are they making adequate progress? Are they making the normed progress that they should be making? So we can, we can monitor all of that. So even the growth the student should make between assessments and year to year is even normed.
And the normed process, uh, progress is based on the average? Or is it individualized to the student also?
The norm progress is based on the average as well, but an individual student may be, go beyond it. So for example, so you would say, yes, they did meet their projected, the normed projected growth, but they've met it, they exceeded it by this much more, is how I would, however.
Or didn't, or didn't get to that? I guess I'm, I'm looking at the students that might be in the low or the low average, that norm progress. Is there, is there expected progress then, still that average?
It is still, it wouldn't take them to the end of the year likely, but it would say that between fall and spring. And the normed growth expectation for the younger grades is much higher than as you get into the higher grades. So let's say for a fourth grade student, maybe that norm projected growth from fall to winter is nine, nine points in a RIT score. So even if a student scored in a very low RIT score, we would still expect nine points or higher. We would still expect them to grow. Now, they wouldn't necessarily get into the high quintile, but we still are expecting at least that amount of growth. And if we put in the right strategies, maybe we can even get more growth.
And they can see whether they're closing a gap, let's say, the teacher, yeah, okay.
But one of the things that I wanted to mention on here is I see it like a train. I want to keep the train going. So I want to see the high kids even growing as well. So I don't necessarily always want to be closing this gap. I want to keep everything going in this continuum. So that's how I'm hoping to look at the data. So not only did you, you maybe had a high RIT score of close to two fifty, but did we get you to two sixty? Did we get you to whatever? So I think that's one of the ways to, to look at the data as well. How are we serving our students who are already there and beyond?
And then, so this, the scores and whatnot are in SIS for parents to view. Okay, and then did we, in the fall, when it was given, give out like that information on how to understand it and so, okay?
So it is, it's in there, so the, the parents will see the RIT score, but they will also see, so it makes more sense to them, where does that fall in that quintile? So, okay, I got the score two hundred, but does it, is, what does that mean? If it's my kid in the low average, average, high, or whatever? So they will get that explanation. And then it even breaks down into their, under each assessment for reading and math, it has these performance areas, performance goals. So we even gave how they did in certain things. Because in math, some kids were really strong in statistics and, and probability, but struggled in, you know, struggled in algebraic, you know, thinking. So tho- those are some, they, parents can play a part in where's my kid strong, as well as always focusing on where my kid may not be performing as well.
District level, would that help us maybe when we're reviewing curriculum, like see that, oh, this is an area maybe we need to be stronger in?
Absolutely.
I think there are a lot, I'm going to interject for a second. I think there are a lot of advantages to this. First of all, going back to your question about parents seeing this, you know, the first time we gave this assessment was in the fall and it's, it's designed to be a growth measure. So parents can actually see, how are my children learning, progressing, et cetera? So there'll be a lot more context to their winter scores. And so when we resend that, we can speak to the growth component of, of the, of the data. But one of the things that's, that's really powerful about this is because we pair this with EdgeClimber, which is our assessment management tool, we can delve down to individual students, but then look at the, the data overall and be able to use that for curricular based decisions. So there's a lot of versatility in how this data can be used for us.
Both of my kids came home today and said, NWEA testing.
I mean, everybody loves a good assessment, right?
I just want to make a couple of comments. So as, as we grow with this and this becomes part of our DNA, I, I think our parents will value this more so than any other assessment that, that we give. You know, we still give our state assessment, but our state assessment does not do what this does. It, this shows my students' growth over time. And that's what, you know, since I've been here for the last three years, that's what we've talked about, having a real, meaningful assessment tool for our parents to put stock in that says, my kid is on track. Our state assessments are, you know, they're a, what I would refer to as an autopsy. It's a one time, they sit in the spring, they take it, and that's it. There, there isn't this growth over time and tracking your student and saying, hey, your kid started out here. This is how many points, you know, we should, would anticipate them growing over the course of the year. So this is a very, very valuable tool. It's nationally normed. It's not just here in the state of Missouri, like our state assessment is not nationally normed that we give each spring. So this is, this is moving us in the right direction for meaningful, making sure our kids are on track to be successful beyond us. Okay. Next, Tara.
High school. So high school, we have to shift gears a little bit because as Dr. Sparks mentioned earlier, we're right now essentially using our grades as a measurement of our growth over the course of this, this school year. And grades are a flawed measuring stick for measure, for gauging whether or not you're growing when it comes to learning. It has a lot of other different factors embedded into those results, whether it be a student's ability just to be responsible. It measures a lot of behaviors. It doesn't just measure your, your knowledge or your content or your skills that you would get in a regular class. That being said, I've got the, this data divided up into two groups. The top group is where we were at term. And first term for us was an entirely virtual term. We were not in session at all during the first quarter of the school year. And then we came in right around the beginning of November is when the high school came back into session. So that gave us about a month to kind of figure out where we were and how we were doing when it came to meeting the needs of students who were in person, while also simultaneously meeting the needs of students who were at home. And so that brought us to about December first, which was a benchmark where we, which is why I included it, where we said, we need to, we need to do something different. And so I'll, I'll preface this by saying, our rate of Fs is definitely higher right now in this environment than it would be in a normal year. But that is not exclusively a Limburg problem. That is a problem that is happening all over the country as all high schools are struggling to meet the needs of their students. And so, in fact, when, when I talk to colleagues from around the area, our data of F percentage is relatively low compared to, to what I'm seeing in some other places. So I'm really proud of the work that was done by our staff over this past semester. And so when it comes to some of the interventions that we put in place, some of them, the first one I would say is best described as almost a universal intervention where it just involves some increased flexibility on the part of our students. Or, I'm sorry, our teachers. Our teachers last year have been studying some different aspects of standards-based grading that includes conversations around things like late work and how willing you are to accept the late work and the whole philosophy behind the thought that the punishment for not doing your work should be to do your work. And that is an area where we still have some growing to do, but our teachers were very flexible this semester in working with the students, recognizing the uniqueness of the situation that they were in over the last couple of months, and then trying to accommodate that by giving them extra time to get their work in. The second thing, right around the first couple of weeks that we were in in-person, our, our counseling department started to recognize some students who were struggling. So during our academic networking time, they started pulling students in to work with them. I think we were starting to learn that a large percentage of our students who were struggling, were struggling with the soft skills associated with school. That many of our students were struggling, were not struggling because they didn't have the capacity to learn. It wasn't because they were struggling with the content as much as it was, that for many of them, they were spending a big portion of their time learning on their own, having to take care of being organized, task completion. And so our counseling department started pulling some of those students in to our multipurpose room two days a week and sitting with those students and just kind of being that person over their shoulder who's going through their work with them and making sure that they are getting their tasks completed. And then we broadened that out and we started bringing students back in. It's our third intervention was to start inviting students back to the high school for additional days. As you know, our students who attend in person attend two days per week. We started targeting students who were struggling, students with multiple Fs, and inviting them to come to school to sit in our cafeteria, really for the bulk of the day. And we had staff members, our librarians, teachers, our academic monitors, who sat in there with them, worked with them, got them caught back up. And with that, by the time we got to the end of the semester, we had failure rates at about eight point six. When we started that intervention, eight point six percent of our grades at that point in time were Fs. And then we were able to get that down to four percent, which if you look at this, you'll, you'll notice. if you look at this, you'll, you'll notice that in a normal year, a typical year like last year, 1.8%. That's about the norm for us for a semester when it comes to failure across all grades. To get that down to 4%, where we were up in the eights and the nines at one point felt like a big win for us. So it was a combination of the hard work done by our teachers, the flexibility of our teachers, and then the work of individual staff members who identified and then took the time to sit down and work with those students, bringing them in additional days that I think got us to a place where we felt like while we were not where we want to be and wouldn't want to be in a typical year, we at least felt like we were able to continue learning throughout a very difficult and unusual circumstance, but get most of our students to a place where they are still on target for earning their credits and moving towards graduation. Any questions for the high school?
Is this chart grades nine through 12?
It is. Yeah, it's all grades in the high school across the board.
And are we looking at ways to then kind of intervene with those ARC students? Because it looked like that number did not.
Yeah, we, so we actually put out that invite to ARC students as well. Obviously, we knew many of our ARC students who are ARC are because they don't want to come to school. They're nervous about coming to school. We actually did have some ARC students who would come in and because they were not mixing with the general population, but spending the entire day within our cafeteria, we were able to grab a few, not as many as we would like, but we, we put that invitation out to both groups.
And I think that highlights just in general, some of the, the research around virtual programming. Kids tend to be either very successful or very not successful in virtual programming. So as we are thoughtful about the future of ARC and how we make sure that's successful, that's a component that we have to continually think about. I would say we've seen that same trend in K8 as well. Some of our families and our students in ARC who have struggled to really connect and to be successful in the same way. So that's where it's important when we're talking about interventions, to be thinking about what can we do now? And then what can we do in the future to support our students? And if you don't mind, we can go to the next slide and I can talk through some of the interventions that are, that have happened. So check-ins, we've got scheduled check-ins across our buildings, K12. We have hundreds of students who have scheduled check-ins per week with counselors and other support as, as Eric referenced at the high school. Parent meetings, we have had almost 2,000 parent meetings since the beginning of the school year that, and those do not include our traditional IEP and 504 meetings. So these are ways that we're trying to garner that homeschool connection. Home visits, almost 300 home visits for a variety of different reasons to encourage and support our students who are, who are struggling or to help get them what they need. In some cases, those home visits are, let us drop off food. Let us provide you, make sure you have the resources you need because you're not able to do that. And it forms that additional school parent connection. Intervention time, as, as Eric mentioned, those additional programs that specifically targeted students who we need, would need addition, new, would need additional support. Family services, as I said, support for food, also connecting families to our, our services within the community. And then finally, grading flexibility. I don't believe Eric mentioned this, but one of the things that we're really being thoughtful about for now and into the future is our goal is that students are learning, not necessarily that students are earning a grade. And they tend to be correlated, but we want to make sure that the learning is the priority. So providing flexibility for students to go back and increase those grades from first semester because they've demonstrated that they have actually learned the content and they've done some of that work. So a different take on what we've done previously to be able to support students as we're thinking about the learning that we want them to achieve. And then as of tomorrow, we actually have a task force meeting scheduled for tomorrow. We're going to be talking about our summer school programming. Last year, if you remember, we did a significant, we had significant changes in, in, in growth in our summer school programming in order to support what had happened fourth quarter. And we're already planning for and anticipating what can we do this summer to help close gaps as we're looking at student learning. So last summer, we increased our high school participation in summer school by over 50%. You can see middle school, almost 300% increase in participation. Elementary, 1,700% increase in our participation just by being really targeted and what we wanted to offer students. We're looking closely at competency based, which is this summer, looking at how students can actually focus on the skills that they need to be successful and the content that they missed as opposed to just repeating entire courses. So that's the work that we're starting tomorrow and that I look forward to, to developing over the course of, of the spring. I think it's also important as we go to the next slide that.
That's okay. I just got a question if you could go back.
Sure.
Just on those, you know, the parent meetings, home visits and so forth, just some clarification. Those aren't overlapping. So in other words, parent meetings as a classification is distinct from the home visits here, right?
I collected the data separately, but I can't guarantee that they, they didn't happen simultaneously, that I, we went to a home and had a meeting with the family.
Gotcha. So of, of the parent meetings, then I, I, I take it some were, some percentage or what have you were in-person, some by phone, some by some maybe virtual Zoom or what have you?
Correct. One of the things that we've done is, you know, while we want to partner with parents, we also want to make sure we're keeping the school environment safe. So a lot of alternative methods to having parent meetings. So by phone, via Zoom.
Right.
When, when necessary, because it's not going to work in any other way, in-person, yes.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Appreciate that.
I think, and, and as we go onto this next slide, I think one of the things that as a nation, we keep talking about, you know, what are students losing? What are students losing? And I don't want to lose sight of the fact that students are also gaining a lot. When we, over the course of our time in the last few years, we've talked a lot about how do we support students in college and career readiness? What are those skills that they need beyond the content-based skills of math and reading and all of the, definitely very important and necessary for them to be successful, but there are other skills that kids need to have in order to be successful, to be able to navigate life beyond Lindbergh schools. So I have collected here literally hundreds of comments from teachers about what they're seeing that our teacher, that our students are gaining. Empathy, the fact that they're watching students who are concerned about peers and wanting to help peers who are struggling or concerned about the health and safety of, of peers. Problem solving. Our students, I have an example from a kindergarten teacher who's our, an ELL teacher who was talking to me about our kindergarten students being able to problem solve through technological issues that in a, in a traditional school year, they would have asked for help and waited and asked for help because we as adults are used to supporting our kids. And they've, they've really been able to problem solve through on their own. Organization, they're organizing themselves. You know, Eric brought this up earlier, talking about the high school. And yes, we have some students who are struggling with organization, but they're gaining skills. They're getting better because they're forced to organize and manage that on their own without that additional support. Adaptability. So I love this. Our kids are wearing masks all day. They have weekly schedule changes, grouping changes. They're being included in virtual learning activities as, as well as in-person learning activities. So just their ability to, to flex. Self advocacy has been a huge, huge benefit for our students. We are seeing students who are now emailing teachers and asking questions. When, that was not the norm before. Our students were not regularly using email. They were waiting until class. They, so that our students are being much more proactive in, in asking and seeking support from their teachers. We're seeing an increase in confidence as they recognize how they're growing their own skills. Patience, they're learning that sometimes they have to be patient with their teachers. They're learning that sometimes they have to be patient with technology. Those are skills that are going to help them know that they also have to be patient with themselves when they struggle a little bit more. We've got students who are learning a ton of leadership skills. They're going into breakout rooms and they're leading discussions and they are sustaining discussions. And in some cases, they're taking those leadership roles in the classroom to be able to support one another. Technology skills, I mentioned this earlier, but you know, some of our students with the most significant needs are learning to navigate Canvas and Zoom and really working much more independently than they would in a typical year. And I think we can all attest to the fact that this entire year has required us all to be resilient and we're seeing that same thing in our students. Lot of social emotional learning overall. So Colin, if you click the next one, social emotional learning, as you know, is one of the outcomes we want. Whoops, we went too, we're going too far, too fast. There we go. Social emotional learning is one of our key priorities for our students. So all of this wraps itself up under that umbrella of social emotional learning. And then the other, we're, we're seeing our kids learn without boundaries. We have students who, teachers have given examples of assignments that they've given to students and students are no longer contained within the four walls of their classroom and, and being able to meet the expectations of those particular assignments. They're being more creative with the tools and the resources that they have at home to be able to do that. We have students who are learning from anywhere in the country. So just some great experiences that kids are getting a chance to have. And all of it ultimately is, is giving us the opportunity to expand the four Cs of collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, communication, all of the skills that I just shared with you, our kids are growing in. And I think it's a great segue to our next and last, because I know I'm really long-winded in, in teaching and learning, our last slide, which is the work that we are doing around the skills we want to make sure our students have when they graduate Lindbergh schools. So this Lindbergh Life is still a draft document. Just as a reminder of what this document is and how it originated, Student Life began this process a couple of years ago, looking at social emotional skills that we wanted our students to have. And then this has continued to evolve through our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory to highlight our, the, like I said, the skills that we want our students to have as they leave us. So this is right now in a close to finished draft of the skills that we want our students to have. So you can see the top band along the top are the big ideas. You see the four Cs there. You see work ethic and effort. That was a big component of, of the work. We wanted to make sure was embedded within this agency, which Miranda referenced earlier, the AP Capstone, really that how do students self-promote, self-advocate, really move forward and have control and ownership of their learning. So all of these different strands and then the objectives beneath them that we will start to move into age-appropriate work that can be tracked through student portfolios over time. Our next step with this particular draft is to take it to our Lindbergh learning team for another level of review. And then we'll start moving forward with transitioning this into our communications with families as well. Any, I know we've given you a lot of information from teaching and learning. Any additional questions or thoughts?
All of those skills that you outlined, we learned that we don't fall back into where we used to be. We don't fall back into doing all the technology for the students that they continue to grow and learn.
Absolutely.
So I know we don't have answers for that, but as we look to next fall or the next year.
Well, I think that's been an ongoing conversation. You know, there's been a lot of things that we've been forced to change and how do we take advantage of that and use it to propel us forward? I think if you just look at some of the things that we've done through our compass that have been accelerated, those are great examples of that. Now, how do we keep the momentum to support our kids?
It's just nice to hear a silver lining.
Any questions for teaching and learning before we move on in the agenda? Good job, Tara and team. Lots of good work, lots of good stuff. Just, you know, I, I think it's so, you know, Tara made that point, but you know, there's people out there that are maybe critical of public education and talking about learning loss and what our kids are losing. And I think it's really important for people to understand, we're taking this opportunity to teach life skills and things that will be important for our kids. And we want to make sure our community and our parents know that, that we're, we're, we are moving forward. And yeah, this has been a year like no other, but we are getting better because of it. And we're going to be a glass half full kind of approach to how we go about doing our business. And we just really appreciate Tara and her team taking time to tell our story about, you know, the many, 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 many successes we've had during the, the last nine to 10, 11 months of the environment we've been in. So with that, let's, who's next on the agenda? Is it you, Brian, HR?
All right. Thank you. Well, this year's been different as it has been for everyone for human resources in the fact that we've done a lot of COVID-19 management and you know about that. But we've, we still have our big picture compass work that we are focused on. And so tonight, we want to highlight three areas of our compass work that, that we've been focused on this year. We've got two people here joining me tonight. Katie Etheridge is our Director of Human Resources. She's going to talk about our wellbeing program, which is so important right now during a pandemic, obviously always important, but it just really needs to be even highlighted during a time like this when you need your, your teachers and your staff to be focused on their own health and their own wellbeing. And then we also have with us tonight, Jason Knittig. And at each of these workshops, I've talked about the ECE reorganization. And one component of that reorganization is moving one of the programs that ECE managed that really wasn't early childhood. So he's going to talk about the transition of Flyers Club, which is our K5 before and after school care that happens at elementary buildings, transferring that away from the early childhood system and moving it under the direction of Jason in the learning, in the Lindbergh community education system. So they just have a lot in common. There's a lot of programming benefits. There's a lot of synergy there. So Jason will talk about that. I'm going to start tonight talking a little bit about our work in equity. And I just wanted to bring forward to you a couple of concrete examples of how this work is moving forward. What you have in front of you tonight is two screening tools that we use in the very first interactions we have with potential employees here at Lindbergh. One sample you have is a teacher sample and one is classified as a support staff sample. Each of these instruments is actually two pages long. I'm only showing one in the screenshot, but they also have a score total at the bottom and a, and the raider identification and things. But as you can see, you've got your first column, which is the questions. You've got second column, which we put notes in about look fours and, and other things we want to note. And then you've got some point totals there. People who score highly on these end up coming in for building level interviews, or they come in for a second round if they're an administrator, or they come in for a, a building level if they are frontline support staff like a building administrative assistant. And so I know you can't see these, these from where you are possibly, but I'll, I'll read these. In the teacher sample, this is an elementary teacher screening tool that we use again for that first interaction we have with teachers. The question that focuses on equity says, what experiences have you had that helped you understand the impact of race, ethnicity and culture in the classroom? And how do you create equity in your classroom? And then our classified sample is from our, one of our frontline people who work with the public. So this would be a bill, an administrative assistant or a building secretary. And the question is, please describe how you would foster an environment that is welcoming, respectful and inclusive to all people within our community of varying beliefs and backgrounds. So what this does is, as you know, we've talked about retention and recruitment of staff from diverse backgrounds, but this ensures that no matter who we're bringing in, they have a sensitivity and they have a proficiency about equity work. And while this is just a first, first glance at what they know about how to approach equity and ensure that that's a priority, when we go to those second rounds, the questions get more detailed and they get more deep and they get more multifaceted. So just wanted you to see kind of what we're doing in this, in this work to make sure that the people that we're bringing in are intentionally well-versed in, in this initiative. Happy to answer any questions about the equity screening work. And we have these for principals and administrators. I just picked two to give you kind of a fast shot, but, and they're all just a little bit different. The secondary teacher one's a little bit different than this elementary one. The principal one obviously is different as well. Okay. Well, if not, we will move on to a quick update about our wellbeing program. It's in its second year. It is really doing some cool stuff. We just talked about it today. I don't want to steal any of Katie's thunder, so I'll just turn it over to Katie Etheridge, who works with Ann Werthen and Kim Gabriel. And they are the, the capital players in making sure Lindbergh wellbeing program is, is available to staff and is being used by staff.
So thank you guys for having me here today. So it's really exciting. We've completed our first year. And this is really a comprehensive employee-led program. So although Ann, Kim and I work directly with our advocates, we really want our advocates to be doing the majority of the decision-making that we were doing. So all the advocates that we have come from a wide variety of backgrounds and positions here at Lindbergh. We have facilities members, we have teachers, we have principals as just people that come in and help us out to making some decisions as well. And so we have five main things that we look at. We look at the community, financial, health, social and relationships, career and purpose, and as well as physical health. So we currently have 13 advocates and we are looking to fill two more positions, one at Long and one at Concord. So far, we've done three major challenges with our employees through our Asset Health website, which include a Retain Your Brain, Hydration Challenge, and then Going the Distance Challenge. And so that Going the Distance Challenge was actually completely put together by one of our advocates. And because we are an incentive- And because we are an incentive-based program, they got points for filling out, like walking, yoga, and eating healthy. So it was a really awesome program. Our next advocate meeting will actually be at the end of the month. So we'll have a new challenge ready for families and participants to do. So in the future, we're hoping to have a Family Fitness Day. We were actually planning to have that last May, and it got put on hold, all things considered. So one other big thing with our advocates I want to point out is that we've been putting out a lot of information about mental health access during this time. And so United Healthcare and Talkspace have worked together to supply members enrolled in Lindberghs. United Healthcare Medical Plan have provided access to thousands of licensed therapists, like 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So the two big things that are going to be updated this year is ClassPass. So for those of you who are not aware of what ClassPass is, it's a monthly subscription service that provides kind of thousands of different kind of mostly athletic programs, but there's also a lot of wellness and mindfulness programs as well throughout the states, really. So if you're traveling, you can also participate in it. We had been members, but we canceled our membership temporarily just while the pandemic started. But luckily, ClassPass has gotten a better hold on virtual programming. And so we are going to be updating that arrangement with ClassPass. So staff who choose to participate, that those that sign up will have access to thousands of streaming classes online that they can do. They'll also have six credits that they can use to do a virtual class that's live, live streaming. And it won't cost them anything, the district will pay for it, $12. It won't come from operational budgets, it'll come from our medical fund. So it's a really good way to get people moving again and either doing mindfulness work that they might not have even had access to here in St. Louis, because we have a smaller community that's interested in mindfulness. They might be able to take a class from somebody in New York, which is pretty cool. We'll also be working with ClassPass to set up a once-a-month livestream class for all staff to participate in. And so that's going to be a wide variety of things too. And staff will be able to get points for participating in those classes. So we actually had today go out and email about Asset Health, which is our wellness platform that we use to record all of this data. So our wellness program is an incentive-based program that allows staff to get rewarded for engaging in their overall wellness throughout the year. In addition to the challenges that I kind of mentioned, points can be received through many daily challenges, doctor's appointments, and courses on the Asset Health website. That's what it looks like now. It's a little bit cleaner, and you probably can't see, but there's an incentive program at the very top that'll show you how far you're doing with your incentives. That's my page, and it currently reads zero, so please don't judge. It started today. But once you get to that 50-point mark, you do qualify for a $50 Amazon gift card. And you can earn up to two gift cards in a year. And our calendar goes until December 15th of next year as well. So from this past year, we had 142 people receive $50 gift cards, or receive gift cards. 51 received their first gift card, and 90 people received both $50 gift cards, for a total of 231 gift cards. So that's a pretty good success rate for a beginning year that kind of got put on hold a little bit with, with COVID. Does anybody have any questions?
Then I will turn it over to Jason.
The gift card's pretty cool, and, and we want people to be incentivized, but it's really more about the health. But, and the ClassPass is a super program. I mean, if you're at the lake at a conference or something, you could still use your ClassPass to go to the gym, assuming when the pandemic's over, it's just really neat. So, thank you, Katie. And then finally, ECE reorganization is ongoing. I mentioned Flyers Club. So Jason's going to talk about the transition from Flyers Club from ECE to LCE. And that's due to happen officially on February 1st, so right around the corner. Jason?
Thank you, Brian, thank you for letting me speak here today. So Flyers Club, as a lot of you guys know, is a tuition-based program for before and after-school childcare. It's for K through 5 students, includes about approximately 300-plus students enrolled annually in a typical year, including special days, which, you know, might be when school's not in session. And there's also a full-day summer camp. It's currently operated by our Early Childhood Education Center. And just kind of real quick, like why this transition? So our Early Childhood Education Center is moving to operate similar to a K through 12 classroom, allowing for additional state funding for pre-K. The program is a non-curriculum academic-based program. So typically, the best practices are to have a before-after-school care programs and camps housed under that community ed umbrella, similar to how the Parkway Schools and the Rockwood School Districts have theirs, or even similar to how Brentwood and Melville have theirs, they contract with the YMCA. But it operates with a similar model to community ed. So as Brian mentioned, February 1st would be the transition date. So why February 1st? Originally, the plan was to make the transition July 1st with the fiscal year. However, much of the transition has already been completed. We have switched Flyers Club to the Community and Rec's new online registration system, which is called Elio. And Elio fits the needs of the Flyers Club a lot more than their current pre-K online registration system. Since October, Flyers Club registrations, payments, rosters, reports, contract changes, all of that have been on that Elio system. And then another good reason for that February 1st transition date is that allows both departments, Community and Rec, as well as ECE, gives us the opportunity to evaluate kind of that new structure of our program prior to the 2021, '22 school year. So that allows us to go into next year, kind of making any changes or anything we want next school year, as opposed to trying to figure everything out over the course of one school year, and you have a whole year before you implement needed change. And then currently, right now, our work, we're finalizing updating, updating job descriptions, things on the backend, budget codes, kind of other logistics. And then the Flyers Club staff and families did receive a notification about this update shortly before we went on winter break. And then really, you know, there's not going to be a change in service outside of kind of the backend of it and the new registration system, at least for now, or who they contact. Professional office staff is in the process of moving over to the Support Services Center. They'll kind of have a temporary office space, and they'll move out of the ECE buildings. Next slide. This is just an overview of what the organization, or I should say, department chart will look like February 1st. So we're kind of calling the umbrella the top-term community programs, because it'll have Flyers Club, Community and Rec, and then facility usage for all the people using the facilities, rentals, things like that. So kind of see my name on there as the director. I think we're going to call it Director of Community Programs, is that right, Joel? And then we'll have umbrellas under there. I don't have the facility use up there, right now that all goes into the director who's doing that, so that would be me. You have the current Flyers Club staff, people coming over, going to the Support Service Center on Watson, will be Kim Barkenwall, Amy Woolstatter, and then Karen Becker, who's currently a part-time secretary. And then we have Open Secretary, which will, that position in the Business Operations Specialist, we'll get kind of some streamlining, some economies of scale. Sometimes the community ed facility usage, we do a lot of more secretarial logistics. We have degree people doing a lot of that, and that's just the nature of the work. But there's some things where we could have one centralized location, have those operations kind of streamlined to make things a little bit smoother, have an expert more than everyone just kind of doing a little bit here and there. And then there's the current Community and Rec people, full-time staff. Any questions?
Or any questions about any of the HR topics tonight? All right, thank you. And before we move on, I did promise Katie and Jason they could leave after they were done.
Yeah, Erica, Miranda, you guys can go too if you want, you don't have to stay, unless you want to.
Okay, it's on to my, my turn.
Dr. Hamby, everybody can go but you. Jill, Ronnie, and Craig, if you guys want to go, you guys can as well.
Well, since we have an empty seat, I might welcome Willoughby up here to sit next to me, because I have him in the audience. But pretty much my topic today is going to focus on facilities and finance around facility and bond issue operations. So I'll let everybody transition, and then we'll start back. Okay, what I'm going to focus on this evening is really the budget that surrounds our facilities, which includes two, I guess, buckets. One bucket is bond issue money, our proceeds from bond sale. And the other is everyday operations, the money that we operate with that come in really from our local tax dollars and other sources. The topics that I'm going to go through on my next few slides include Prop R, M projects that we have in progress, other than the high school. I mean, the high school is the very big thing that you see happening, and there's a lot happening right now, but there are other projects that we are progressing on that have to do with Prop R. There's also projects that we completed, but we've talked a lot about those, so I'm, I'm moving forward. And then I want to just update everybody where we're at with our bids on the high school and progress on that. And our long-range planning around facilities. We have a Board Advisory Committee that really focuses on that. And I'll get a little bit more into the information about that committee as we progress on the slides. The debt pitcher is important. The large facility items that need improvements really have to be funded by debt, you know, through debt service and bond issue money, just because of the cost of getting things done. And we'll talk about our debt pitcher. And then priorities that have already been put on the table for next summer. So, next slide. Projects in progress, other than the high school. If you can remember, I'm sure everybody does, but Prop R is a $105 million no-tax increase bond issue that was approved by the voters in April 2019. Primary purpose of the bond issue was the high school, and that's where most of the money is going. But we also put a lot of money in safety and security with secure vestibules being built at elementaries last year. And we have that project going on this next summer. So what you're not seeing, but is what's coming, is the four projects listed below. We're looking at a gifted center, of course, that we can house all of our gifted programs. And that's really still in the design and development stage. And looking, after design and development is finalized, to firm up costs and see how much putting a program in place like that, or facility in place, will be. And then Safety Glass Project, that is one that we are, have bids out on the floor right now. We actually have a bid meeting, pre-bid meeting, this Thursday in regard to that project. That is secure glass and transaction windows at all of the buildings that did not receive, you know, full-fledged entryway. And I have noted on here that it's Dressel, Sappington, Concord, ECE, and ECE West. We will be looking at security-rated glass and the same things where, we've had to get used to that now with COVID, of people not coming in and out. But it'll be nice in the future to have a transaction window where people can pass things in and out. COVID got to us a little quicker than our transaction windows did. Secure vestibules, we're on the second half of that project this summer. We will be looking at Truman and Kennerly. Those are bigger projects where we actually will have a vestibule, like the ones that we just put on Crestwood and Long. And then also occurring at the beginning of the summer this year, we're going to look at the Truman Facility in whole. That building's been around a long time, and we really just want to have our architect team get in there and look at all the conditions from the HVAC to the plumbing, to the electric, just the total envelope, as well as the internal on that property. I don't know if you want to add anything, Dr. Lake?
Yeah, just on the safety glass, that, that's in equity. So that's bringing the other buildings that we had already that had the secure vestibules, which was Dressel and Sappington and Concord, bringing the glass up to the standard that we put in at Crestwood, Long, and Sparing, and then what will go in Kennerly and Truman this summer. So it's just to cross the district to make sure everybody has that same equity. And as we do our facilities, as three years ago when we sat about this time, I think, and we're having our first conversations about work that needed to be done around our facilities, it was really about how do we bring equity to our facilities that are aging? And what does that look like for us? So this is all part of that work. And the Truman study is, it's a building that is in need of lots of things. Central air for one, the electrical, the plumbing. So kind of like we did with the high school, we need to assess that building as a whole to say, do we renovate it, what are our other options? And so in June, we'll be able to get, really get a good audit on what direction do we need to think about in the future down the road for Truman Middle School.
Next slide, please. Just wanted to give a quick budget update on, really, this is high school focus. We have all of our bids out, and I can say permits for all of those bids in hand as of today. So that's good news. Of course, we started at the bottom, which I would talk about turf. Everybody kind of forgets that that was part of this prop budget and that that was completed early on. So that is completed. We're getting close to the, being completed on the Central Utilities Building. I think we're talking at early February for that to be completed. That, I did want to talk about where we're at with budget. Really, we had a change order on this project, but this change order was really related to the coding changes that came through in between us doing the bond issue, drawing up, drawing things up, and then years passing. So we had to make some modifications at the high school due to code changes and safety shelters. So I won't say that that was an error in the bid, but that was a change of scope. So that's what that is. If you want any comments on that?
No, it's, we, we asked the question of the county upfront, are we going to be on the 2009 code, I think it was, or the new 2015, which they had not enacted? And then all of a sudden, they, well, they said 2009, we're not going to do it by the time you get it done. Well, even in the midst of COVID and everything else, they said, oh, by the way, you got to be on 2015 code, which then that ups the amount of storm shelter that you have for number of people you can put in space and all of that. So that's what triggered us to be, have to be able to design, or the need to design, a additional storm shelter. The other one is our new band room in the, in the high school that we will also serve as a storm shelter for that building. And again, that's a equity thing as well, like Dressel is our one elementary that does have a FEMA-rated storm shelter. So again, as we look at our other facilities, when we remodel, we put an addition on, how can we go about getting that equity of a storm shelter on each of our campuses as well? So that's just all part of our equity conversation around facilities. And I will just say this, we've been very pleased with our bids.
Yes, I was going to say, we've been very pleased with our bids. They've been coming in on budget, like I said, and I wanted to know where we're at with our change orders on those projects. And that one looks significant, but again, it was a major change in scope. And so we did go out to bid on that scope change and rolled it into that walktor bid. So that one, really, we're going to be, I'm going to be able to mark complete on that in the not-too-far future. So that's good to see. The center part there with renovation addition and mechanicals is the largest part of our budget at the high school. And we do have those two vendors on, which is BSI. And Wigman is the mechanical engineer and contractor for that. With those two projects, again, we were very happy with the prices those came in at, or the bids. And we're still working through some value engineering on both of those projects, which means we're just looking at the bid packet now that we have a vendor and dotting our i's and crossing our t's, just to see if there's other ideas from their point of view on how we can still have a very quality project with all the bells and whistles we want, but just different i's and dollar savings. Both of those bids do contain a contingency, so that's always good on our side. That means even though you see the, what the bid came in at, there is a contingency dollar built into that, so that changes can be made within the bid, bid dollars, and not have to go outside. So I think the BSI project has a million-dollar contingency built in, and the Wigman one has a $600,000. But again, we're both working on value engineering in both of those. So we're really happy with what those numbers came in. The third item on there, it has been bid, and we have a vendor. And that's for the storm shelter and gym. And we actually, did I have that right? I did that backwards, did I? Okay. We just got the permit today for that project, and so things are ticking up at that site. We did put in place the parking off-site to transport, contract all our workers from another location. another location onto the campus starting this week, because we know there's going to be a tick up in activity. The one remaining item that is a big project on the high school site is the end, where we have to demo all of the buildings and then put new parking, and that part of the project will be bid later down the line. As you all know, I mentioned the August 2023 date of when this project is going to wrap up, so near, when we get near to that deadline, we will bid this portion of the project. But all in all, things are, paperwork's done, and now we're on to project. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the high school? Okay.
So we have about 13 minutes, so.
13 minutes.
Yeah, so we need to.
Okay, this one's, I just want to talk about long-range planning, and we're always looking at the next set of improvements. I mean, one is done, and we already start looking out into the future. We, as a good steward of taxpayer dollars, just like at home, you want to utilize the equity we have in our buildings that we're never going to sell and invest back in our properties. So next slide. I've been working with our finance team, our bond council, and we're looking at our debt service fund, assess valuation growth, and how all of that impacts what we can borrow. Right now, just conservatively, we've been looking out to the next five years, and based on half a percent growth in non-reassessment years and 2.5 in reassessment years, which I will tell you, our reassessment years are normally a little bit higher than 2.5, so this is conservative. Our next potential no-tax increased bond issue, which means maintaining the levy as is in our debt service fund, is, would be about $45 million in 2024. And again, these are just like ideas, we have to think outside the box, we can't just plan a bond issue in two days, we're always looking at the future. Another thing that we're working on right now is looking at our current debt, our GO bonds, and seeing the interest rates. Of course, the current low-interest rate environment, and I'll say low-low interest rate environment, we want to make sure that we take advantage of any refinancing opportunities. We have several GO bonds that are up for refunding, and just the initial numbers that we've run on those, it looks, it's promising. Remember that any money saved, and when we refinance GO bonds, though, has to be, is committed to the debt service fund and can't be used for operations. So we're looking at that as we go. District building, this is talking about capital operating funds, so I kind of just focused on our bond money and debt service fund, but we have money in our operating funds to take care of our facilities and capital priorities. We have that Board of Education Committee that meets really from October to February each fiscal year, which is really the prime time that we're looking at next summer's work. That committee, which takes information, all the buildings, departments, get opportunities to submit what their requests are for their building. Their wants, needs, and have-to-haves are all sent forward and presented to this committee. And we look at the items listed and the funds available, and we prioritize. So I can tell you, district facility projects that are prioritized based on needs of the district and really the administrative team and board, a lot of it's surrounding security. So security bollards at our sites is a district priority. We put these into phases, so that we'll do a few, a project a year with a phased schedule. Parking lot repairs and upgrades, that's a priority that is constant. And then playgrounds, keeping those upgraded for the long haul. The next slide, kind of just a summary, it's hard to see, I know, for most of you on here, but this is a summary of the data that was submitted to our project committee, and it's color-coded by, the red is the district submissions, so those are the priorities I just mentioned are the district, and then the blue are priorities that were submitted by buildings, are departments that are really in the affordable era, I guess, and then the gray at the bottom, again, we keep track of everything a building submits and everything a department submits as we look forward to a future bond issue. So that's the summary of submissions today. Next slide. Another big, big project that we have going on with our Facility Advisory Committee is an equity and campus circulation study, and that we are doing, next slide, in conjunction, in association with Itner and our Perkins and Will architects. They have spent hours, inordinate hours, in our buildings with our staff, with our principals, looking at the whole campus inside-out envelope, and add to that, how the buses enter and exit. And we know that's a definite need in our district is to refine the circulation in and out of our campus with our buses. So what I have following here, and again, this is really hard to present on here, but the final document that Perkins and Will present, will present shortly, has details, I've just put a couple buildings on here, but they've in detail have all of the data on the current look of the building, plus, you can just scroll through these quickly because they're really hard to look at through here, and then their proposed plan, so the next slide, like this would be the current campus, then they have for all of our buildings, the green is like suggested if we're going to add on in the future, or if we're going to make improvements. Crestwood and Kennery are big ones, they have gyms that are cafeterias. So the goal at those elementary sites would be to separate the gym and the cafeteria, and that would be equity. Equity is also in the number of classrooms and the purpose that they're being used for. So this, the data that's going to come out of this report is really crucial to looking ahead at a future bond issue. So I just put, go to the next slide, the green is the ads, then we look at Kennery, it has the current building in detail, next slide. Suggestions, again, they're green suggestions, and there may be more than one option. They've proposed several different options. It's now for us to take that package or that binder of data and then sit down internally as a team and decide, you know, how we're going to go forth. And of course, the board will be intricately involved in that process. So I think the rest of it is really a lot of, you could skip through those slides and go to the last one, which I want to talk about this summer, this summer's work. Most of our work in facilities happens over the summer, so I can tell you that coming up, each building throughout the district will be touched this summer with some type of a capital improvement, based on, again, the needs that were presented by the buildings, departments, and central office. Our work this summer, you know, will not be the equity study or campus circulation information, that's more big-dollar future bond issue changes, but we're going to use that to plan for those big-dollar bond issue changes, and then, again, our Prop R projects continue, so.
So real quick, and we can take any questions, just that equity study, you know, Joel talked about that, you know, a lot of our campuses, and I'll just use Concord, and I don't know what the solution would be there, but we need to get as much vehicular traffic off of streets and onto our sites for safety on Crestwood's one as well. So as we're looking at that, again, safety, equity, all of those things, and every campus will have a master, kind of a proposed facility, so when it is time in the next Prop or Bond that we do, we pull those out, we can sit down with each local community, we can sit with the Long community and say, here's kind of what our Standing Board Advisory Committee has kind of said, you know, this is kind of what we're thinking, so on and so forth. So we're not starting from scratch, we kind of have an idea of what that looks like and what that can be, and then it's, again, you dust it off, it's a starting point, it's not an all-b, you know, it's not the end of, A, it's final, and this is, you know, where we're going, it's just a jumping-off point for a conversation about improving, improving that campus. So any questions about all of that? I know that was quite a bit, but I think the important thing is there, that 2024 date kind of in your heads around, you know, even a no-tax rate, 45, and that is a very conservative number, that 45 million, we think, as long as nothing crazy, crazy goes on with the economy or anything like that, so we feel good about that. And those dollars, that's a lot of dollars to get some equity things potentially, like at the three elementaries that don't have their own gymnasium, those storm shelters I referenced earlier, you know, all of those kinds of things. And we'll start, keep chipping away at the smaller ones that we can do between now and that next time we want to go out for a bond or a Prop, so, so, any questions? Okay, we have, Beth, you have four minutes.
Okay, well, I said it, we have time.
Beth, you get to go, you get to go first next time. I know, she gets.
Okay, well, one of our compass goals is really to, how do we work with our other departments in the district to be strategic about how we're communicating, to really have a plan, and work with them on their different programs? And part of that is just being organized and planning out. So tonight, for example, you heard about meaningful assessments, and how do we start to tell that story to our families so that they understand about these assessments and what it means for their child and how it measures growth? Another example would be, today, we sent out a survey about school start times, and so just planning ahead so that we've sent the survey out, now, when are we communicating out about the timeline for action regarding that? And I could go on with a number of examples. Prop R, of course, is a good example. So one thing that we are going to do in our department is, this is the electronic version you're seeing, we're also working on a in-person version that can be very visible upstairs for us, that's a calendar where we can work with teaching and learning, human resources or business, and we can write down, here's what's coming up in April. Okay, how do we work backwards from that? But on our spreadsheet, we're just going to fill that out every week, and we're going to mark how we're communicating, as far as what methods we're using, and it's really small up here, but that might be our mass notification system, it may be our principal e-notes, social media, our website, if we do an app push. And then, Colin, you can go ahead to the next slide, but these are the other things that we'll be noting or measuring. So as we're talking about telling our story, what strategic goals are we addressing, our success measures, all of the work that we're doing that you can find on our website, how are we building up and telling that story as we go? And then just general things throughout the year that we already are following, as far as our school calendar, our staff recognitions, and just going through the calendar like that. So if we go to the next slide, this just goes through some of the measurements and how we'll be able to note these things so we can go back and track, but these are our strategic goals, as you know, on our strategic plan, so aligning that communication with our strategic plan in these areas. And on the next slide, it shows our success measures, which you all are very familiar with, and our community defined for us how we measure student success. So we have those that we're looking at. The next slide is just, so we can keep track of all of our departments and our areas of focus, and I think, I think that's the last slide? Yes. And then also just our buildings and our levels, so that we're tracking how much we're doing at the middle school, elementary school, are we covering all of our bases as far as reaching all of our different groups and representing them well? So it's really just taking everything that we're already doing, but it's organizing it and planning, showing it a little bit better so we can plan and track. So any questions about that?
I think it'll be, this will be really good for our community, it won't be like a one-and-done, like, oh, we talked about the map assessment, then we don't revisit it. It's an ongoing, almost like a drip kind of communication plan with all of our initiatives, that we keep that information out there with our families, kind of almost like a, some of it might be like a fun fact about the map assessment, you know, we might develop those and tweet those out or whatever. So just keeping that information there in front of our parents and community so they know what we're doing and why we're doing it.
We did this over the summer as we were preparing to come back to school with our Green Light Plan, and we really, my team, we worked together and planned it out really well. It's just extending that to everything that we're doing, so. Thank you.
That's it from the team, so not any questions, I think we're good. Mr. President?
Good, good stuff. Thank you, everybody that presented. I know, I appreciate it, I think everybody does, getting that type of information here. So we move now to adjournment, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Okay, so we'll, again, do a roll-call vote. Mike Chamia, yes. Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlis?
Yes.
And Dr. Kathy Calhoun-Brans. Okay, Limburg Schools Board of Education Workshop number 1525 is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us.